All right, welcome everybody to the March 24th City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. We'll start with the minutes from our February meeting. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to see any sense and comments. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the planning commission about items that are not on tonight's agenda? We've got this time for you right now. Can't see none, then we'll move on to announcements. Catherine?
Just wanted to announce that we are looking at different types of research and that type of thing, of maybe possibly bringing in speakers, really wanting to hear from you in terms of the type of things that you want to know about planning, about planning commission, about different projects, all of those things that you would like to have an orientation toward that you could tell us. If we were to bring in a speaker, what subject would you like that speaker to cover?
Okay. Can we just email those to you?
That would be great if you would just email me and we can get a list together and go through the list and decide if we wanted to bring somebody in or if it's something that staff could do, something we might even, you know, want to look at a local area for.
Okay. Maybe like beachfront property if we want to look at how to do that in Franklin.
Yes, of course.
All right, moving on then. Is there any items that we need to add to our non-agenda list tonight? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to throw the chair over to our vice chairman so that he can address the secondary consent agenda first, items 10 and 14, and then we'll go to the consent.
Okay, secondary consent items, items 10 and items 14. Item 10, East Town North America Site Plan, Revision 1 for EV Charging Station, addition of an 18 parking space charging station on 52.12 acres on Carruthers Parkway. Item 14 is the West Haven PUD subdivision, final plat, section 26, revision 2, re-subdivision of lot 1002, 29 lots on 6.47 acres located south of Cormack Street and west of Jewel Avenue. Those two items are presented as consent, secondary consent agenda items. Is there a motion to accept those?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Roger. We'll move on to the main consent. Currently, we have items 7, 9, 11, 12, and 15 on consent, and we'd like to add 13 as a deferral to the April meeting. Is there any of those items anyone wants to pull from consent? All right, seeing none, then is there a motion?
Move for approval as amended to move 13 to deferral.
Second.
Okay. Proper motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Then we'll move on to item number eight. Ordnance 2011-10 to be entitled to rezone .94 acres from Civic Institutional, CI, to Central Commercial, CC, for property located at 112 and 118 Bridge Street. Steph?
This is a request by the city to rezone the property of the old jail and the old old jail to a CC from its current zoning. The CC, the Central Commercial, is in compliance with all of the properties around this particular piece of property. It is the intention of the city to raise the old jail eventually and to put zoning into place that might in the future allow development to happen. That has not been decided, and there would be some things that we would need to do in terms of the floodplain and floodplain regulations. But right now, we just want to zone the, this particular property in compliance with the zoning for the rest of the area.
Okay. When you say raise, you're not talking about lifting up?
No, we're talking about destroying.
All right. Just lift it down. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, then is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number 16. Amend the municipal planning commission bylaws.
This is an amendment to the bylaws that have been passed quite a few years ago, and it basically is outlining, it's changing some of the terminology and outlining the processes that the planning commission will go through. I would ask that you look at 9.1.1 under conceptual project workshop and add to the end of that, conceptual project workshops shall also allow city or staff projects, or some language to that effect, so that the discussions we had tonight could take place, they are not just PUD projects, but also projects where staff may want some input from the planning commission and the board.
Okay.
What, is there a recommendation on how we need to change that?
I would say, in addition to plan unit developments, conceptual project workshops would also entertain staff requests for discussion.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? Okay, then is there a motion?
Move for approval as amended by staff, section 9.1.1.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to just go over some specifics, although a lot of it was as was stated, they've changed, you know, chairman to chair and put in planning and sustainability and things like that.
I did not do that.
On page, you know, written page five on the bottom. 5.1.2 actually just makes cosmetic changes, however, I believe it's always been incorrect. In 5.1.2 on page five, saying that the term of one member shall expire every year because that would indicate that they're like, that the terms are seven years long, and I believe they are five years, five years long. Is that correct? And so, that just, we would say that the term of at least one member shall expire a year, or maybe at most two or something like that, but you can't have seven members, you know, with one expiring every year unless they're seven-year terms, and they're not, they're five-year terms.
I think that the, your qualifications that of at least one member would cover however the terms.
Okay. And I think that's what the old one said, but at the time, I believe, I remember thinking at one point that was, that couldn't work.
Shauna, do you want to amend these individually as we're discussing this?
I would. I would take that as an amendment to amend that 5.1.2 to say at least one member.
I'll second it.
Do we get the motion?
She said that was a motion.
We could say if it's agreeable that the term at at least one member, so that at least one would be added.
Okay, all right. That's a motion, then you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Then let's vote on the amendment to the main motion. All in favor of the amended language say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, back to the main motion.
Okay. I have a couple of, no, maybe I better say the ones that I'm particularly concerned about, that, but I noticed on page nine, when it talks about non-agenda items, and I can understand the staff concern about having those placed, but didn't we have in our bylaws that if someone wished to have a non-agenda item heard, they had to send this to the planning commission one week in advance or something like that? I don't, I don't see that in here, but I'm, maybe that was just the custom, I don't know, but, but I know, that's not something that I necessarily have anything specific to say, but, about, but I thought that they, you know, because we used to get, didn't we get special?
Yeah, we used to get FedEx or whatever.
Yeah, the study and things like that.
And it wasn't, you know, whether it was practice or whether it was in there, it was a week in advance, and they were supposed to individually deliver it to each member on board.
That's right.
The staff wanted a little more control over that and to know if something like that was going to come forward, we would at least be aware of it and be a party to it, and so.
Oh, I definitely agree with that, then, but they, as I say, that they left it out or not, am I wrong? I mean, that piece, that piece of it's not in here anymore, that, is it?
Not only on Friday, 12 o'clock noon on Friday.
Six days in advance.
Okay, but was that?
That's what they've been doing previously. We'd been getting it like before Friday, Friday before the meeting.
Yeah.
And then it would come to us.
Okay. And that's in the red again?
So it's really the same thing.
The big change in this non-agenda item is, again, it clarifies what non-agenda items can be, and they're, and draws them very narrowly.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. On page 11, on voting, down at the bottom of the page, it says, "Majority of the planning commission members present, so on. At the discretion of the chair, the voting on questions shall be by roll call, and the ayes and nays should be entered upon the meeting, or the minutes except that when the vote of all the planning commission members present is unanimous, according to unanimous vote. Otherwise, a voice vote shall be sufficient." I think, I think if what we do at the Board of Mayor and Alderman, if there is a division, you know, if it's not unanimous, then the people are asked to raise their hands, and I think that would be better, because I know that there have been times when it was not obvious who had voted one way or the other. And, and it may be that the chair could just say, you know, and name the people who voted yes and name the people who voted no, but I think that, I think that something needs to be done there, just to make this easier on getting the correct minutes.
Right, right. Don't you do that now?
Yeah, I will, because I have a show of hands.
Yeah, sometimes Brenda hits me upside the head and say, yeah.
That's right.
But I think it needs to be said in here that a voice vote, you know, won't be, you know, wouldn't be sufficient in that case.
So we've got to raise our hands every time?
No, 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 I'm saying, no, if there's a, if there's a division, you know, it's not if it's unanimous.
The chair's way too.
But.
Well.
And I think that's why I said, if you don't, if you don't know who's voting for and against, it's your discretion at that point to say by roll call who's voting for what.
Yeah.
If you don't think the minutes are clear, if you can't see who's voting yes or no, then you need to make sure the minutes are taken care of, and that's your responsibility.
But let me tell you, it's the minute taker also who needs to know this, it's not just the chair, because the chair may, might, if he says like it's six to three, at least could you say the names, because that will be on the record?
Sure.
The people who voted no.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to record it here, but that's what I will start to do.
Okay, but I'm still saying, that needs to be done, but it needs to be done all.
Yeah, I agree.
Because if you say he voted no, that's efficient, because obviously the others voted yes.
They're voted yes. Okay, right, okay, that's, that's it. On page 13, this is talking about, and it has public comments and public hearings, but I think there is a distinction there, because I believe if something has a required public hearing, every person who wishes to be heard from the public must have the opportunity to be heard. And, and I could not see that in here. It says, you know, it's talking about kind of public comments here, but it, I didn't see where it made a distinction about public hearings, and this may be, maybe it's still on that page there, but, but I do think the chair could ask for, you know, if there are quite a number of people who are really just making the same comment, and you know, many times you've said, is there, is there a spokesperson?
Right, right.
That would, that would give the, the comments for the, for a certain room or something like that. I certainly think that's perfectly good, but I don't think that, because isn't there someplace where it says the, you know, that the, that the chair may, well, it says they may limit those comments that are irrelevant or repetitive, but I want to tell you, if it is a public hearing and somebody wants to make a repetitive comment, I think by law, they have to be able to make the comment, even if it is repetitive.
Well, it does say here.
After that, those individuals wishing to speak, so I think anybody who wants to, you know, he may suggest, you know, we may say, well, if you are going to say the same thing, you know.
You're raising a hand to say that you're, that you're in support of what's already been said or something like that.
I don't think he's saying that you can't speak. So I think everybody, anybody who's wishing to, I think it spells it out in here.
As you can, he just has to limit.
Yeah, he does.
Right, yeah.
Who'd ever deny anybody the right to speak.
Right.
Well, it just kind of says in here, the chair may limit, and I don't think that, I don't think that is allowed. That's under D?
So you say strike D?
Yeah, I see what she's saying, uh-huh. Because C, C and then the last part of E is saying any individual, so you're spelling it out, so G probably does need to be deleted.
Or it could be.
Shouldn't we allow him to deny irrelevant comments, I mean, what I was going to speak about?
How do you know it's irrelevant? Do you?
That's right.
Can we clarify that, that says public comments versus public hearings in that statement?
That could probably work, you know.
Because E is really talking about that public hearing.
Right, yes, it is.
Yeah, E covers, you know, what state law does, the public comments might be, you know, just anybody coming up to comment.
I guess if it's just public comments, what if that was applied under F? Because F is a specific, the public comments section.
Okay.
Okay.
Except that that says all items on the agenda, and of course, we have a section at the beginning of our meeting that allows people to make public comments on items not on the agenda.
Oh, good point, good point.
So they have to make sure that that opportunity is addressed in this section as well.
And technically, I think the planning commission shall allow public comments, at least that's in our, you know, in the order of business or whatever that is. On every, on every item, it says, public comments are requested, so I don't think that's A, I think it's shall. Right.
Okay, you want to put forward a motion on those items?
Okay, so now we're saying, on F, the planning commission shall allow, shall instead of may, and now on D?
Delete.
What was the best, just delete that? Is that the best?
I had the word public before comments.
Or maybe limit those public comments?
And limit may mean tell somebody, you know, you've had enough time and.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
Had an opportunity and so.
Right. Well, let's go back, let's go back to D for just a minute, when it says the chair may kind of.
You made the, you made the motion for the word shall.
Shall, okay.
Let's take that first.
Okay, okay.
I'll second her motion.
All right, moved and seconded.
It's on page 14 under F.
13.
Page 13.
13.
Did I say it?
Sorry.
Okay, is there any comments on the motion?
F may, shall allow.
Shall, because that's in our order of business.
Okay. No comments? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, back to.
D, then, so when we say limit the public comments?
Is that a motion?
I guess.
Well, no, wait, what is, what is, look, give the chair the discretion of, if somebody gets up over there and they're talking about something that wants to get up that has no relative or is repetitive, let the chair have some flexibility on saying, sir, that's not relevant or that's repetitive.
Oh, absolutely.
That doesn't hurt a thing, and it doesn't, and we, and I don't know that we've ever had, had the, when we ever had the opportunity that that's come up. So, you know, I, I leave D in, I don't have a problem with D as it is.
Well, here's the thing.
I think it gives the chair the flexibility.
D doesn't limit the number of people.
It's just the time.
It gives the chair the opportunity to get the speaker to land the plane.
So you mean when the comment, the comment from a particular person is repetitive?
Becomes irrelevant.
That would be all right, but again, the way that's written here, it sounds like a comment that is repetitive.
Well, that'll take over in two minutes, they won't be able to repeat very often.
Yeah, we got two minutes kind of takes care of it.
Exactly.
Anybody want to get up there and say, hi, 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 for 10 minutes?
Yeah, yeah, two minutes.
Okay, okay, so.
And by saying A, it does give them the flexibility.
If there was 100 that wanted to get up and disrupt the meeting, which we have not had.
Right, then we may have to.
That gives the chair some discretion.
But now wait, if it is a public hearing, I think the 100 have the right to be heard. I think they must be heard.
I don't think so, Ann.
Now, if it's a public hearing?
If they want to be heard, they, they should be able to, but generally, no one wants to say here, oh, not anyway, so a lot of times, they have utilized the one speaker.
I think that's why.
If they all want to line up and talk, they certainly can.
And we're not taking that opportunity away with any of this.
Well, but see.
And I think it's worked good in the past.
Which we can if it's a state law.
If it's, that's, because C, it says public comments and public hearings on D, where.
And you really don't have that many public hearings, you guys have a lot more public comments.
Yes.
Right.
That's where you have your issues, public comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could just put public in front of comments.
Yeah.
Which says what we're talking about, yeah. Takes away from the state law.
Right, so would we go back then to say, public comments, put public in there?
All right, that sounds like a good motion.
Okay.
There's a second. Any discussion on that item? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, and my, the other thing is, on the coming cards, and I don't have that marked right here, but I got, I just got a copy of what we have out here. I think this is an excellent idea to have people print their name and address and what agenda item they want to speak to. Speaking of minutes, that would make, you know, having to say, and would you, would you identify yourself and spell your name, you know, or something like that, that would make that easier. I think probably because people who come here may not be familiar with the, you know, that what we're saying here is that we will limit these generally to two minutes, I think something like that needs to be put in, put in here, you know, saying.
As part of the agenda?
No, on the, on the public comment card, because, you know, people who come here may be first time, people here and don't realize that they're going to be limited to two minutes until you tell them at that moment, and all of a sudden, they're thinking, you know.
Yeah, how do I turn my five-minute speech down to two minutes?
That's right, that's right. So if that could be in here somewhere, and I did like the idea, if you prefer not to speak but want your comments to be included on the record, I thought that was very good, but they don't, they don't have to make their comment here, unless they, unless they don't want to speak, that they want to be on the record, is what I understand. But I do think there needs to be some place there, and I didn't really look up there to see, does it have a big sign that says, if you want to make a comment, you need to fill this out? I didn't look at that, I was just more interested in the, in this little thing right here.
Generally, if we know that we're going to have a large number of people commenting, we'll generally have a staff person there to help them fill it out and to kind of tell them what the rules are. Generally, with their individual comments, it's not as important.
However, I know, I know that two minutes, it's sometimes kind of hard to adhere to or have, or hard to, because I chaired one surprise, you know, but, but as I said, there could, could be something on here maybe to say, you know, comments are expected to be, are limited to two minutes or something like that, and then you, then you've got the leeway in case there's a special circumstance.
If you want me to add that to that, that'd be great.
Yeah. And that was in here somewhere, I think.
Yeah, it's either B.
Yeah, it talks about.
How much have been limited to two minutes per individual at the discretion of the chair, and under limited circumstances, the time may be extended for due cause.
Right, but I think they need to know it in the front end, is what I'm trying to say.
Roger?
I've got it, yeah. This is the right brain side of me thinking here. It seems that item F is attached kind of as, almost as an afterthought. The planning commission shall also allow public comments. Well, we've just given a half dozen different conditions under which public comments are offered.
Okay.
So maybe that item goes number one, that becomes A.
Yeah.
The planning commission shall allow, take out also, shall allow public comments on all items on the agenda. So that next sentence would stand the same.
Yes.
And then, item B then becomes prior to speaking during public comments, kind of gives the rules under which those public comments are made.
Okay.
Then we have item E, which is now F, that's, that addresses how a public hearing works, and then if we want, we can add another final item at the end that says, the planning commission shall also allow public comments on items not on the agenda.
Which we need to say.
Which is what we do in our normal agenda at the beginning of our meetings.
Right.
That would conform to these same rules. Okay?
Which would be G.
So, okay, we'll change F to A and we'll move everything.
Sounds like a motion.
And add G, yes.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion about that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, any other discussion?
I have one other on page 17, another workshop for other public comments again. I think here would be reasonable when there are items that are being brought to the planning commissioner, BOMA, by city staff, or maybe there are some items that the public would like to comment on if it's permissible by the chair. I think that there has to be some kind of condition there that, and give us some, a little bit of leeway to accept some public comment if it's appropriate, as determined maybe by the chair. I'm sorry, on page 17, under public comments, is 9.1.10.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is, yeah, and this hadn't changed from the previous bylaws.
That would be fine with that, in a controlled environment where it's not a back and forth, where we're basically having a meeting with a 10th planning commissioner or whatever.
Right.
But we have allowed that in the past, we've had people from the audience make comments.
But some other times, we have not been able to permit it because there was so much discussion among the planning commission and the board.
Yeah, I would like to.
Sometimes it's reasonable, and just to say blanket, it's not permitted, I think.
Maybe we'll sit at the end of our discussion or something of that nature.
It should be your discretion, I think, in my opinion.
Yeah.
It should be the chair's discretion.
No public comment may, no, wait, public comment may be permitted during the workshop at the chair's discretion.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Can I make a motion as stated?
As stated. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Motion, amendment to the main motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
They have one more. I just saw here, I had, on page 15, under, this is talking about membership of the conceptual project workshop. Why does it say both the current board of mayor and alderman and the current municipal planning division? Doesn't that current need to be taken out?
As opposed to having a member?
I don't know why that's in there, I mean, the, the members of the board of mayor and alderman and the members of the municipal, Franklin Municipal Planning Commission are who they are, it's not.
It may be meant, and I don't know why it was written like this, could be meant, sometimes you're in the middle of a project and then there's a new election.
Election.
And there's something that happens, you know, BOMA changes or planning changes in the middle of a project, and that you may still really want to talk about because you were a member at the time, but that doesn't really mean that.
Well, I mean, but if it says members of the board of mayor and alderman, that's who it is at the, at that date.
Is there harm in leaving it in there?
No, but it just seems weird.
I'll address you as current.
Hey, I'm the only one that's been a former, came back again.
Ex-alderman, so.
All right, is there any other discussions?
We'll leave it current, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay.
There's a.
Because I'm not a current alderman, I'm an ex.
But you're not really weird.
Right.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the main motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, any other discussions? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.